Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees held here on May 13th, 2024, beginning at 6:00 PM. Our first order is to call to order. Our second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Item three is public comments. I don't believe anybody signed up tonight, Monica. All right. Item four is the superintendent's recognition. Would everybody please come in front of the dais? Our first item is recognition of students advancing to state and national competitions. Ms. Parks.
Good evening, everyone. We are so excited to be here with you tonight, and we are so excited to honor over 150 students who have advanced to state and national competition this year. So truly, truly outstanding. And so, parents, just so that you know, what we'll do is we'll call them by group. And so I'll call their names, they'll shake hands, and then, for example, we're going to be calling all the power lifters, we'll shake hands, and then you'll get up there all together, guys, for a picture with the board. And moms and dads, that's when you can take pictures. If you stand up and take pictures in your heart's desire, then I will move the next group on. So we don't want anybody to miss pictures. We are going to start tonight with athletics, and our first group is powerlifting. And we have Coach Pilot that's with our students, and we have...
Nani Rubio, Kate Burke, Cheyenne Kepler, Jazaria Clinton, Claire Little, Josephine Craig, Andre Salz, and Josiah Harris, and of course, their coach, Coach Pilot. Congratulations to our power lifters. And students, if y'all will come and kind of stand in front of the board.
Could you announce that Joel won the Freestyle State Championship yesterday?
I can't, no, I can't, I'm sorry. All right, congratulations to our power lifters. And if you guys will exit that way, perfect. Next, we have volleyball. We have Coach Smith and Claire Little. Stay up here. Claire Little is recognized for her All-State Academic Elite team. Congratulations, Claire. Claire, you have to get a picture. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one more. Congratulations. And now we have wrestling with Coach Clark. We have Joel Aguilar, Marissa Ruiz, and Rebecca Terry. Congratulations, you guys. I know, and Joel's an expert at these meetings. He's been to several, so he knows how to do it. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. And for our athletic training students, academic all-state, we have Hayden Buchanan, Josephine Craig, Raja Coleman. Congratulations, you guys. And Coach Stravonic.
They never have an offseason.
Never, never. Yeah, you guys come on in the front. And girls track with Coach Levin, we have Kari Holloman and Sanaya Richardson. Congratulations, girls. For swimming, we have Coach Spano and Miranda Crayon. Is that correct? Cron, Miranda Cron, Topanga Kennedy, Kirsten Woolrun, too. Congratulations, you guys. Congratulations, guys. And parents and families, if you were here only for athletics, you were welcome to stay, but you are also welcome to leave because now we're going to start CTE. And so for our business, our Business Profession of America, we have, in accounting, we have three students, Priscilla Balon, Myra Mendoza, Myra Mendoza, and Steve Baca. Any of them here? Oh, that's all three of them. Oh, go ahead, sorry, 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 sorry. Just the three of you. And now for our automotive students, we have Senna, Alexis Senna, Benjamin Flowers, Yeraldine Garcia, Dylan Garabey, Christian Hernandez, Oscar Hernandez, Trey Kingsley, Nyla Medina, Nevea Smith, Saul Garcia Gonzalez, Joshua Mishden, Christopher Sorrels Riker, Justin Braniff, Jennifer Juarez Partita, Dion Rivers. You're doing, perfect, stop right there. Perfect, right, perfect, right there. Dion Rivers, Brianna Rousey, Santiago Garcia Munoz, Santiago Landeros, Jerick Maro, Maro Morris, sorry, I need to, my glasses on, I guess, Uriel Mendoza, and Zach Zalkowski. Now, we'll snake around and then go back, just take the picture. You don't have to shake hands again. You'll just go in front for the picture. Y'all follow directions so well. Y'all are amazing. Thank you. We may have to do two rows of you guys for pictures. Let's see, either that or squish. Y'all will turn, turn to the sides a little bit, so let's see, right here. You're in the middle, so you stay, and you guys turn this way. Everybody on the side turn this way, you guys turn in this way, and scoot out. There you go. There you go. Yep, there you go. Y'all got it. Thank you. Congratulations. Y'all go exit that way. And for healthcare, for, oops. Yeah, somebody back there might have bumped the wall by accident. It's okay if you'll just push the button again. Yep, that was right. There we go. Thank you so much. It happens all the time. For healthcare, we have Stephen Maturi, who presented, who participated in HOSA. Congratulations. And for construction, these guys worked with the job exhibit. We'll have all you guys come up, and then don't forget to stay and take your picture. We have Jesus Cavazos, Bryson Bales, Logan Whitmore, Eric Yanas Vargas, Logan Meeks, McCavian Harrison, Sam Serta, Xavier Cervantes, Jose Padilla, Jesse Tipton, and Adam Rodriguez. Congratulations to our construction trades. Logan McCavian, and they were part of the spice rack at the job exhibit, and then Sam, Xavier, Jose, Jesse, and Adam did coffee table and some CNC furniture. So congratulations, guys. Thank you, guys, so much. Congratulations. And for cosmetology, we have, for flat nail art, we have Kashia Fletcher, Karina Dominguez, Maya Laura Langit, Tiara Slider for nail art. For day and evening looks, we have Myra Chima, Ashlyn Irwin for men's cut and style, Valeria Gordardo for flat nail art as well. And women's edge cuts, Leslie Garcia, Jalen Hamis Loza, and women's braid style was Mackenzie Degalozua. Congratulations to you guys, yes. Okay, all right. Great job, girls. And these guys are no strangers to this building, but we do like it when they bring food, but we'll still let you in tonight. And that's our barbecue. For culinary, we have Reese Madrano, Jordan Magana, Reginald Field, and Sebastian Hargrove. And Reese is representing the group.
We have a sponsor coming.
I guess the rest of my team is smoking a brisket right now.
Well, we will excuse them.
Tell us where to be after the meeting.
Are you down here? Yeah, you're down here. Yeah, okay. So no FFA? Okay. I don't think any of our FFA students are with us tonight, but we had two that earned honors at the FFA Livestock Show in Houston, and that was Asaria Bailey and Yurien Ordes. So congratulations to them. And for law and public service, for our Criminal Justice Quiz Bowl, we have Angelica Gomez, Trent Locklear, Sammy Morales, Jacob Slosson, Manuel Martinez. For opening statement, Angelica Gomez. Male Law Agility, Trent Locklear as well. And then crime scene investigation, Jalen Willett, Miriam Mathis, Kayla Cooper, Valeria McDonald, Jaslyn Alexander, Angelica Gomez, and Diamond Trevino. So congratulations to you guys as well. Congratulations, guys. So for manufacturing, we have, for precision machining, we have Emma Fisher, Evelyn Guérez. Automated Manufacturing, Jose Renteria. For CNC Mill Programmer, Gabriel Beatty and Matthew Beatty. And Automated Manufacturing, Madison Karkowski and Ernesto Avila. Congratulations to you guys. Congratulations, guys. Zachary Zalkowski was representing us in welding, but I don't think he's here tonight. So now we are moving on to Fine Arts. So we have our two art students. And for art, we have Jamie Flores and Valentina Morales. They actually have, oh, she's not here. Jamie has her medal that she earned from the vase competition as well, so we want to make sure to show that off tonight. Are you Malik? Okay. So here's the deal. And now we have a big group for band, and we're excited to honor you guys. For UIL Texas State Solo and Ensemble, we have Malik Badger, Daniel Barrows, Jaden Byhi, Beal, it is Beal, I apologize, Jaden Beal, Mikael Buster, Juan Castillo, DeAndre Colbert, Joshua Cole, Angelina Concha, Lily Cortez, April Delion Hernandez, Bryshawn Dixon, Mikhail Edwards, Gabriel Espinal, Luke Herman, Andrew Gerald, Parker Madsen, Julio Martinez, Aaron McCarty, Benjamin Mendez, Gabriel Reyna, Braden Slay, Crystal Soto, Christopher Tate, Adan Toralvo, Dinah Towell, and Barrett Travis, oh, and Jocelyn Valdivia. Yay, you guys did awesome. And their teacher, Brent Matheson, director. Congratulations, you guys. Okay, so you can follow how they did it. Okay, all right. So, hang on just a second, though, hang on. Wait, do we have choir, hang on, do we have choir kids here or not choir kids?
Yes, we do.
But are you, are you in choir, Jessica?
Yes.
Oh, then that's why. Okay. Thanks, Skylar, for knowing what you're doing. Okay, so for our choir students, we have Perla Alejos, William Ball, Madison Chapman, McKenna Davis, Joshua Galeno, John Mark Gary, Skylar Gordon, Ashton Grady, Joseph Hernandez, Monte James, Jack Justice, Joshua Liller, Hayden Mendez, Amira Parker, Trinity Robinson, Nettie Royal, Kaylee Som, Taylor Street, Avery Tarbit, Avery Thomas, Lania Webb, and Nazareth White. Thank y'all for representing choir. Yes, you, y'all can go back towards the back for the picture. Congratulations for you guys. Also, UIL's Texas State Solo and Ensemble. Hang on, just stay there for a second. I see a couple pics still. Okay, you're good. Congratulations, except for Skylar. And Skylar is representing the entire Theater Department tonight. She also has her state competition medal. So for theater, we had a big weekend this weekend for Temple High School Theater at UIL. We had Sydney Fisher, Skylar Gordon placing fifth in hair and makeup, Jaden Mahoney, Alyssa Olivera's, Avery Tarbit placed fourth, Kiara Williams, and Aiden Wozniak. And thank you for representing so well. We appreciate it. I know you're so shy, but... So those are our 150 kiddos that qualified for state and national competition, and we are super proud of Dr. Mayo and his staff, and all of the staff that supports our students, and parents, because we couldn't do this, and the kids couldn't do this without your support, so thank you for that. That was awesome. That was great. That's my best time ever. And we'll talk about it. Where's my medal?
A consideration for recommendation of the principal of Jefferson Elementary School, Dr. Adams.
I'm standing in for Dr. Ward. She's a little under the weather, and so she was afraid she'd start coughing, so. Oh, they're all coming in. Look at that. Okay, so, good evening, Board. The Jefferson Elementary Principal Interview Committee, consisting of Lori Cook, Shirley Holsher, Denise Chisholm, Bill Peters, Kelly Baugh, Rosie, Rosa, she goes by Rosie, Leroy, Rachel Johnston, and Dr. Sarah Watson, conducted interviews on April 26, 2024, and selected the top three candidates to interview with the senior leadership team. The senior leadership team interviewed the three candidates on May 2, 2024, and selected Mrs. Amanda Slay as the lone finalist for the position of principal at Jefferson Elementary School. Mrs. Slay graduated from Harden Simmons University in 2003 with a Bachelor's of Behavioral Science in Mathematics, and she graduated with a Master's of Educational Leadership in 2015 from Texas Tech University. Mrs. Slay served as a middle school math teacher in Colleen ISD from 2004 to 2016 before moving into an assistant principal role in Colleen ISD in 2016. In 2021, she came to her senses and moved to Temple ISD to be an assistant principal at Ray Allen Elementary, and currently serves as the AP at Thornton Elementary. Mrs. Slay is married to her husband, Laurent, for 20 years, and together they have three children, Braden, who you just met, who attends Temple High School and participates in the IB program and plays with the highlighters, Paxton, who attends a Lamar Middle School, and he's in band, orchestra, and all things athletics, and Maddox, and she's seven. She's a first grader and attends Thornton Elementary with her mom. And in her spare time, I don't know how she has spare time with three children, but in her spare time, Mrs. Slay loves to hike with her Aussie doodle, Zeke. Mrs. Slay is passionate about education and excited about working in the community in which she lives. She looks forward to positively influencing the families within her school community and having a direct impact on their educational experiences. It's with great pleasure that the interview committee recommend Mrs. Amanda Slay to the Board of Trustees for approval for the position of principal of Jefferson Elementary School.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. This does require approval by the Board. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign, oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Wow. This is where I'm at in life, though. So, I gotta grab some glasses. All right. I am deeply honored and grateful to stand before you today as the next principal of Jefferson Elementary. I am truly humbled by this opportunity to lead and serve the Temple community in this new capacity. I can assure you that I will pour all that I have into the staff, students, and families of Jefferson Elementary School. First and foremost, I want to thank the selection committee, the Board, Dr. Ott, Dr. Adams, and the senior leadership team for your trust and confidence in me to lead this beautiful campus. Thank you to my mom and dad who are here today, as well as my family, friends, former and future colleagues who showed up this evening to show their support. I want to express my gratitude to my current principal, Michelle Rhodes, as well as the teachers and staff at Thornton Elementary who have become extended family over the past two years. I believe education has the power to transform lives and communities. Educators have the opportunity each day to shape the lives of the students and families they serve. I am someone whose life was changed by a teacher, Miss Grooms at Howard Payne University, who believed in me. Her influence changed the trajectory of my life, and I wouldn't be in this position without the love and affirmation she sewed into me. There have been many other amazing educators along the way who have shaped and refined the person who humbly stands before you today. Thank you to my first principal, Mike Birch, for teaching and modeling that it's all about kids. Thank you to my first principal as a new administrator, Dr. Randy Podasky, for modeling compassion, patience, and servant leadership. Lastly, I want to thank my current principal, Michelle Rhodes, for her words that breathed new life into me at a time that I needed it the most, when she said, Amanda, I don't think you see the way, I don't see, I'm so sorry, I don't think you see yourself the way others see you. Ms. Rhodes, I cannot tell you what those words meant to me. Thank you. I cannot express to you how excited I am to serve the families in my neighborhood. Jefferson Elementary is located less than a mile from my doorstep, and my husband has served as an administrator at Lamar Middle School across the street from Jefferson for the last four years. We are both proud to serve in the community in which we live and raise our children. I am a firm believer that we all have the ability to help change the world by doing things in our power, doing everything in our power to positively impact the community around us. I would like to close by honoring my personal Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. He has blessed me with 20 years of marriage to my number one supporter, Laurent Slay. Laurent is an encourager and a visionary, and I wouldn't be standing here without the affirmation and grace he pours into me daily. God has seen me through 20 years in education, the birth of three beautiful children, and a brain tumor. He has used these experiences to refine and equip me for the work that still lies ahead as principal of Jefferson Elementary. Thank you so much.
First, I want to thank Mrs. Pam Demney, who's in the back hiding from me, for her service as the principal at Jefferson Elementary for the past several years. She is retiring, and she has done a fabulous job. And the second thing I would say is if the staff at Jefferson and the students and families are able to see half the passion on a, half the passion on a daily basis that we had a chance to see in the interview, I promise you that the possibilities at Jefferson are limitless. Congratulations, Amanda.
The staff brought her a little gift as well.
Amanda, did you have a chance to introduce your entire family that was here? I know you talked about Laurent.
So this is my dad. This is Paxton Slay, this is Lamar Middle School, they're from Lamar, they go to Lamar. This is my husband, Laurent. My mom is right here, Villa Charmin, my daughter, Maddie. Where's Brayden? And there are so many people here that mean so much to me that I cannot even express my gratitude for all of you there. So, thank you.
And on behalf of the district, we want to thank your family for sharing Amanda with us. We really appreciate it.
Our principal, Mrs. Rose, is ill today, but she's FaceTiming right now, so just want you to know that as well.
All right. Item six is the Board Presence Report. A administration of statement of officer and oath of office for Board members for District Three, Four, and Five. Ms. Sparks.
Yes, good evening. And so if we could have Ms. Cook, Mr. Posey, and Mr. Gaines please stand. Positions Three, Four, and Five were scheduled for election on May 4, but they had no running opposition, so the election was canceled, and therefore we get to swear you in today to begin another term. So if you will hold up your right hand and repeat after me, in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of the State of Texas and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God. Congratulations.
This has been a great, this has been 12 years on the Board, a great experience for me. I've enjoyed it so much.
It's been 10 years on the Board for me, and I wouldn't trade it for anything. I come in with a preconceived idea of how things ran, but I really learn fast. That's not the way it works, but I've enjoyed it.
And I'm still the new girl at a year and a half, but I love it and I love serving. Thank you.
Okay. Item two is the T I S D Board of Trustees Officer Elections. It's the time of year that we elect the Office of the President, Vice President, and Secretary. So at this point, I'll open it up to nominations for the Office of President.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Dan Posey.
Okay. All right. Motion made and seconded. Are there any other nominations for the Office of President? Seeing none, I close the nominations. All in favor of Dan Posey for Office of, for the President of the T I S D Board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Black sign. All right, pass it. Thank you very much. Again, this has been a great experience. It's a great Board, great team of eight. We've got, got a lot more work to do. Our second office is Office of Vice President. At this time, I do open it up for nominations.
I nominate Mr. Ronnie Gaines.
Nomination of Mr. Gaines, Ronnie Gaines, for Office of Vice President.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Ms. Gallin. Are there any nominations out there for the Office of Vice President? Seeing none, I close the nominations. All in favor of Ronnie Gaines for Vice President of the T I S D Board of Trustees signify by saying aye. Same sign opposed, the ayes have it. Congratulations, Ronnie.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. It's been an honor to serve, to serve in that capacity. I truly appreciate all the support, and I love working with this group of people here.
All right. The last office is the Office of Secretary of the Board. Are there any nominations out there for the Secretary of the Board?
I'll nominate Virginia Suarez.
Nomination by Mrs. Meyer of Virginia Suarez for Board Secretary.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. Are there any more nominations for Secretary of the Board of Trustees? Seeing none, I close the nominations. All in favor of Virginia Suarez for T I S D Board Secretary signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. Welcome back.
Thank you. You know, I'm not going anywhere. I appreciate it.
We're just going to continue to roll on and doing the, doing the work we do. All right, thank you. Item C is designation of delegate and alternate to the Tasby Delegate Assembly in San Antonio, Texas on Saturday, September 28, 2024. Mrs. Dawn Cook has agreed to be the delegate, and Ms. Virginia Suarez has agreed to be the alternate. This does require a Board motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Gallin.
I second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign to oppose, the ayes have it. All right, thank you. Thank you for representing us in San Antonio this fall. All right. Item D is designation of facilities and policy committee members for 2024 and 2025. For the Facilities Committee, Mr. Ronnie Gaines will continue as president or chair of that committee. Virginia Suarez, Shannon Myers, Shannon Gallin will continue on that committee. For the Policy Committee, Dawn Cook will be the chair of that committee, and it will be Mrs. Cook, Ms. Davis, and myself, Dan Posey, on the committee. And so we'll, it's basically, we're keeping the same committees, same structure. All right, thank you very much. We've never, I don't think we've voted in the past. I think we just name them. Yeah. All right. Item E, presentation of the Barnhart Neighborhood Plan by the City of Temple.
Want to thank Erin for coming today. She's Assistant City Manager, and she's done several neighborhood plans. We did ask, had a chance to talk with her and ask if she, while she talks about this neighborhood district, if she could also include some of the information around the new elementary school in terms of the roads and so forth. So she has built that into the presentation as well. Erin, we welcome you and we appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much for coming, Erin. Appreciate the update.
Thank you for having me. So, yes, very important neighborhood planning district. This is actually number 14, so I'm excited to share this with you. So as you all are aware, the new elementary school is being built within our Neighborhood Planning District, known as the Barnhart Neighborhood Planning District. It's the area that you see there in the red. It's a very far southeastern portion of the Neighborhood Planning District boundaries. So here is the location of that. We always do a radius around there to look at anything walkable. This is very far out. This, this neighborhood is very different from the other neighborhoods that we've looked at before, and I'll talk about that a little bit in detail here soon. Never know if I'm pointing in the correct loc, okay, that way. Okay, so you all can see that the Sampson Howard Elementary School, where we've located that property there, as you know, there's been some development, some recent development that's occurring just on the other side of Blackland Road, lots of single-family homes going in there. But really toward the western part of this neighborhood is an existing, more of a country, a farm feel, agricultural feel, but then the remainder kind of toward the, sorry, toward the southern side off of Little River is vacant, unimproved land, which we see changing. So, as you know, we go through a very extensive public engagement process through this. We had a neighborhood event, and we handed out surveys to all of the existing property owners. We conducted a series of focus groups, held several different external planning team meetings that we met with throughout the entire process. We did our M P D News Edition where we highlighted all of the important parts of the plan to get feedback. And then lastly, we meet with all of the boards, including you all. Some of the boards that we meet with is our Neighborhood Revitalization Advisory Board, our Historic Preservation Board, and our Planning and Zoning Commission. So here is currently the zoning within this area. You can see in the green there at the top in the northern part, and everything's sideways, I apologize, to fit on here. So north is, when you're looking at it, to your left. So that is all green, so that's currently zoned agricultural, really fits with that. And then you can see the remainder is that yellow color, which is single-family. And then you do have some mixed in with some red, which is designated commercial. This is where we looked at the, oh, of course. Good, thank you. We always do a sidewalk conditions assessment. This one was a little easy. There are no existing sidewalks, other than the recent ones that the city has installed with the Blackland Road project. So you can see that they are all in very good condition. Here is our opportunities and constraints. So with this, we looked at the existing area and noticed that Dogwood Lane is one of the streets that several utilize to get to their homes in the existing area, and that is in an extremely poor condition. The elementary school, we noticed, under construction, so we really wanted to take into account some safe routes to school considerations as we proceeded through this process. There's also toward the top of the page, which would be the eastern part of the subdivision, of this neighborhood boundary, is a drainage corridor, and we felt like that could be a great opportunity for a park or linear trail system.
Got a question. I know Tech Todd is working on the connection of Blackland for 95 with, I guess, Turney Lane or lanes to Deceleration Lanes. Do we know when that may be opened, or is that, have they informed the city? Do we have any idea?
You know, I am not sure, but I can check with our engineering department and find out for sure. Yeah, I'll get back to you on that one. Moving on, this is what we consider our Metropolitan Transportation Plan recommendations, which is effectively a transportation plan. This really guides us as we look at connectivity throughout the neighborhood, and it also will translate into thoroughfare plan amendments as we move forward. So you can see that we identify Blackland Road as a major arterial. Little River Road is identified as a minor arterial, so, you know, intending for those to carry, you know, high levels of traffic. Some other roads that we looked at are Barnhart, which is a community collector, which we'll talk about that, you know, that's currently underway now, and we'll talk about the construction as Dr. Ott said. And then we also identified that trail system I talked about. You can see that in the dotted green area, as well as pedestrian connectors. Those are the ones that we make sure that there is connectivity. So we've had some recent plats come through that you can see just across Blackland Road from Sampson Howard Elementary School. And one thing we thought about is that, you know, likely what we will see is more single-family development going east from there. And we wanted to make sure that students have a walkable system so where they can get to the elementary school, so not having to come out onto Little River Road, which carries, you know, a large amount of vehicular traffic, but make sure that there's something internal. Some plating had gone on, had some plating had gone underway, so we weren't able to get the connection of Ronald's Creek, which is that middle road that you see there, but we have been working with the developer of that neighborhood, and we are likely to see Boggy Creek Drive continue to extend south. So that way you'll still have that internal connectivity that will lead over there to Blackland Road, and then students can get on the trail system if they want to walk to school. So moving on to Little River Road, what we've identified for Little River Road being an arterial is a four-lane roadway. Those are four travel lanes, a side path on one side that allows for bicycle and walkability, as well as a six-foot sidewalk on the other side. Barnhart Road, as you all know, that's a two-lane travel lane road with a center turn lane, has an eight-foot side path on one side and a 10-foot side path on the other side. Then moving on to the community collector that we identified within here, and we identified that to have two travel lanes with a center turn lane and a side path, eight-foot side path on one side and a sidewalk on the other side. And then the neighborhood collector, you can see that that's the east-west, that would be a future roadway that would go through future development that would occur to the south. We feel like that something else is necessary. You want to make sure that you have collector streets to really distribute a large majority of traffic throughout the neighborhoods as they come on. So we generally identified that to be within that location there that you can see, and then that would be able to handle two travel lanes with parking on both sides and a sidewalk on both sides, separated by a planning buffer. And then the neighborhood collector, we are showing one that will be running north-south as proposed, and that would have two travel lanes as well with parking on both sides. But we do show that linear park corridor, which we'll go into more detail as I proceed with the presentation. That would be a nice 20-foot wide corridor to allow for a off-street walking trail, and then also have a five-foot sidewalk on the other side. And then lastly, the pedestrian connectors that we talked about, those pedestrian connectors are kind of your typical residential streets. They're two lanes, but we do identify a four-foot sidewalk on one side, so there's walkability within the neighborhood, particularly to the school. Moving on to our enhancement focus map, what we did here is that we identify what we think is the future of these areas. So the agricultural area is really kind of changing more to an estate, which what we consider on the city side in a state neighborhood is a half acre or larger. So that's something that we're identifying there. You can see the commercial edge that we've identified along 95, as well as somewhat along Little River Road, as Dr. Ott kind of mentioned to you all earlier. The school campus is identified there in blue, as well as the single-family area in yellow. So here's a closer look at that linear park that I was talking about. So that drainage corridor really provides us with an opportunity, you know, we, we often see drainage corridors, and they can be enhanced to be safe, provide a fence along one side, and then provide a nice off-street walking path to provide for that. So we identify a community park there on the southern side at the very end, where you could have some playing fields, and then the linear park would effectively go all the way from the southern boundary, following that drainage corridor to the northern boundary, and providing that recreational element for the neighborhood residents. And then here is just an example of how that could look along there. So you could see the trail corridor could connect to the commercial development that would be off of State Highway 95, and then you could have some, a crossing that would lead there over with a nice bridge structure, would be a pedestrian bridge structure that would go over that drainage corridor, leading to those commercial elements. So people within the neighborhood could effectively walk to future commercial. Oh, I went too fast. Oh, okay. Let me try that again. Go slower. Okay. So here's a close-up of that Barnhart Community Park that I was mentioning that's in the lower south side there off of State Highway 95. lower south side there, off of State Highway 95. So you can see that there's, there would be a large amount of space for some recreational fields for people to enjoy, have some playground, playground structure, also provide some parking elements for those who prefer to drive, because this would be a larger park, not a neighborhood park that's necessarily completely walkable from all areas of the neighborhood. So providing that parking is important. Showing any future commercial there on the other side of that drainage corridor along State Highway 95 is important to show as well. And then you can see how we've identified some possibilities for, you know, some perhaps, you know, more high-density living through perhaps some townhouses or apartment buildings, not very many. And then with the majority of the neighborhood really being more of your single-family development. And then some other, some additional commercial that could separate the park to the community collector.
Has that land been obtained yet, or there's plans to obtain it, or that's just...
No. First, we kind of go through here, and once council approves, and then what we do is we take all of our neighborhood plans, and we rank all of the projects, the CIP projects. And depending upon the ranking is how we propose to council our idea of funding structure.
Is this going to be with the development, I guess, apartments for park space with the neighborhood? Is this been built into this park here? Or are they going to have to be community parks, little small parks sprinkled out throughout the neighborhood instead of being developed?
It really depends on what the developer would like to do. I don't think that there is a park that's proposed so far with those, unless, Christine, no. So what they've been doing is paying parkland fees, which could effectively go toward this. Great question. Oh, did it again, y'all, I'm so sorry. Just moving you along. The community park, here's some park programming. This is kind of an inspirational slide. So, you know, we really see this as, you know, you start out with the rural part of the neighborhood, and you move into the more urban element at the neighborhood's becoming. So here's an idea, you could even have a park that, you know, builds upon that with a cute barn structure, and just playing upon that. You can see that we've also identified some other needs that could happen here with practice fields, sports courts, picnic shelters. Could have a wide array of things. So what we would do is we would take the elements of this plan and work with our Parks Department to develop a more detailed plan as we progress. This is the estate neighborhood that I was telling you all about. So we really felt like the estate neighborhood had a different identity than the remainder of the neighborhood. You know, the remainder of the neighborhood, as we all knew it, you know, before the subdivision, before the elementary school, was undeveloped. But now it's changing, and, you know, you're seeing single-family development come there, which is wonderful. It's perfect to go around an elementary school. But we really, the, what we heard from the residents is that they would want that the northern part of this neighborhood to remain more agricultural, more estate. So we really separated the two, because we felt like it had a different look and feel. Now, unless someone comes in and redevelops that, that's up to them, but the current property owners really want that to remain. So as we were looking at that, we promised them that we would look into kind of identifying it different than the rest of the neighborhood. And so we came up with some branding that we felt like would fit into it. So it's kind of a sub-district within the entire neighborhood, and we titled that Green Acres. Moving on to the commercial edge, you know, we have some opportunities here, I think, for some future commercial development, as you get more homes, more rooftops, you know, more people in this area that will often draw on commercials. So we want to make sure that we lay that out where that's appropriate ahead of time. And so as you saw on the previous maps, we think it's very important for us to have that along like State Highway 95 and some other areas within this neighborhood. And, oh, go ahead, I'm so sorry.
And Tech Todd requires, they control the...
Yes. Yep. They would have to do the driveway, the access.
And they're pretty much more into singular entrance and exit versus multiple now.
That's right. Exactly. Which is why those collector streets are going to be so important to get access there, and then hopefully. So what we'd love to see, you know, is setting that commercial edge where, you know, you really limit the amount of parking along the street. So it's walkable to people that are coming there, and then you put the parking behind the buildings. And you've seen that with a lot of our neighborhood plans. So that's something that will be highly recommended as this area develops. And then the new neighborhood, as you all can see, so some of it has been plotted, but there's a large area that has not been plotted. So this is just a closer look. So we have some recommendations for the type of development that would be appropriate out here. Of course, single-family detached, I think, is going to be very popular moving forward, just as what's already been plotted and being constructed out there. 60-foot-wide single-family lots, that would allow for some driveways in the front, kind of your typical single-family that you see. But then in addition to that, we see an opportunity for some large lots, single-family, that could be out here, you know, with the Green Acres area. Those large lots, and what we would consider a large lot, would be half an acre or larger. We think there's some great opportunity for something like that here as well. As well as maybe a little mixture, you know, having a buffer between the commercial and the single-family area, mixing in a little bit more higher density of townhomes, live-work, you know, multifamily apartments. And then here's some branding that we came up for the Barnhart neighborhood. You know, it started very rural, and so we built on that with the barn. I think, though, I will say, what we've heard is the sunflower has been a true favorite of many. So as we do that neighborhood branding, and you all see the signage going up, we'll go through that process again and pull from here inside, but this does pull in from the historic nature of the neighborhood. And then here are some examples of what you would see going through here. So the neighborhood monument may look a little bit different than you've seen. You know, this is more rural, so in nature, the existing, so, you know, using kind of that wood look there for the monument sign versus your standard masonry, just a very classic look. And then some examples of the different types of designs we came up with on street sign toppers. And then here is our capital improvement projects map. So we did not put Blackland on there because that project's done, but we still identified it on the map. And so you can see, the first one there is the trail, the linear trail system, as I stated earlier, that, you know, that would connect to that community park. And so we would look into that as we move forward in making that project come alive. It would require, of course, the city to have some property acquisition, but it could also include a donation as future development comes forward as well. We've also identified an extension of Dogwood Lane, as you can see there. So getting the neighborhood to the north, the estate neighborhood, down to Barnhart Road is something that we could do. And then also a project for Little River Road, the expansion of that. So I think next are the project updates. Okay. So apologize if it's so wordy. I wanted to make sure I gave you all. So I have four project updates at the request of Dr. Ott, which I was really happy to put together. So I was able to get with our engineering team, and they were able to do that. So I included maps with each of these as well, so you could have an image. So the project scope for the Barnhart Road reconstruction, our improvements along Barnhart, so effectively going from Barn, from Little River Road to State Highway 95. That includes widening it to three 12-foot travel lanes, drainage improvements, the addition of sidewalks on both sides, as well as landscaping, lighting, and a new 24-inch water line. Also, this project includes improvements on Little River Road. That would be widening that to 12, or I'm sorry, four 12-foot travel lanes, drainage improvements, the sidewalk on the east side, as well as landscaping, lighting, and a 12-inch water line. So currently, what we have under construction with this project is the water line on Barnhart has been constructed from State Highway 95 to the Atmos Crossing. The storm sewer along Barnhart has also been constructed, and our encore relocation should be happening very soon. Our Little River Road detour is in place right now, and we expect the construction to be complete before the school year's hope happens. That would be the portion of State Highway 95 to the school entrance. We hope to have that complete in August of this year, so just a few short months away. And then by April of next year, we hope to have the remainder of the project complete. State Highway 95, we're also looking at some left-turn lanes over there. So the improvements along State Highway 95, extending from Barnhart Road to just south of Blackland Road, include widening that roadway, adding a median and/or a left-turn lane onto Blackland Road. That would include some 10-foot-wide shoulders, 12-foot acceleration and deceleration lanes at Blackland Road. Those improvements along Blackland, there'll also be some improvements along Blackland Road at State Highway 95 intersection, and we'll identify as we move forward this project any drainage improvements that are needed. So currently, what we have under construction is the subgrade and base has been completed for the southbound lanes, and the base has been completed for the northbound lanes, and we expect construction to be complete in June.
Karen.
Oh, yes.
I know there's a...
Sorry. Yes.
I know there's a traffic signal planned for that intersection. Do you have any updates on that?
I think I have that on another slide, if I'm thinking of the one you're thinking of. Yes.
Add a Blackland in.
Yes. I think that is the one, maybe make sure, this one right here? I think that's this one. Make sure.
Did I miss that?
No, we didn't go over yet. I think that's... Oh, here we go. Little River Road improvements. That's the one I think you're talking about, right? Is that right?
Oh, I see the, I see, get an associated signal.
Mm-hmm. Yes. So, yeah, Little River Road, the intersection at 363, that left-turn lane on the loop, will have signal modifications there.
So I'm talking about Little River Road and Barnhart, or I mean, I'm sorry, Blackland, I didn't mean Barnhart, Blackland.
Okay, maybe I can go...
I know they did a study for that.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the study was finished.
Little River and Blackland.
You may know more about that than I do. But I believe that the study finished.
Yeah, I can check.
You mind pulling up on that?
Yeah, I will. You said Little River and Blackland? Okay.
Yeah, that is, that is, that's really, I think, what we're most concerned about, because...
Okay.
The stretch from 363 to Little River, all the way, I guess it'd be south of Blackland, there's no light anywhere at all. And we anticipate a lot of traffic going from south to north in the mornings, because you're going to have people that live south or in north, that's a problem. And you're going to have traffic going the other way, and they're going to have to try to turn on Blackland. And that's going to be really difficult, because if there's no traffic signal there, you're really going to have to wait until it clears. And with that much traffic going north and south, buses included, that's going to be extremely difficult. And I think between Blackland Road and, I guess, almost 252 feet, something like that.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-something car lengths. So if that piles up, it would certainly go past that intersection. That would just, that would become a real problem. So we've talked about, not you per se, but folks in the city talked about putting a light there. I think those were warrants in there.
Okay.
I think they're around 400,000 or so for a signal.
That's right.
And then if it wasn't ready by August, I believe they're going to put a temporary signal on it.
Okay.
Until that's ready. But that's all the information I have.
Okay.
That would, that's going to be a, that will have a huge staffing effect.
Okay.
If that doesn't have a signal.
Yes, I can find out about that tomorrow and get back to you. Thank you. I'm so sorry. I think I'm, can I do it still? I think I have two more I have to... Yes, sorry. I just wanted to keep going. Yes, I think this was it. That's good. So we kind of briefly touched on this, but let me, I'll go over this slide as well. The Little River Road improvements. Yes, okay. So that is, those are, that's from Barnhart Road to Loop 363. So we're widening to 12, four 12-foot lanes. Did we go over this one? Maybe I'm losing it. So, and then we're also looking at some intersection improvements at Loop 363. We're going to be installing, or constructing a left-turn lane onto Loop 363, and then making modifications to that traffic signal.
Do you want to add to the demo came the other side?
Yes, yes. That design is underway. The design and construction completion dates are to be determined. There, since design's underway, we're going to have to wait till we finish that up. And then we do, though, are proposing to council to have construction funding in fiscal year '25, which our fiscal year begins in October. So hopefully, I can have, I will have more updates soon on that one. Then the last one is the, can I get to it? There we go. The Lower Nob Creek Wastewater Trunk Extension. So that's effectively a wastewater line, very large wastewater line. So that would include a new eight-to-10-inch wastewater line along that tributary of Nob Creek, and that will extend from Loop 363 to the Little River Road intersection with Blackland Road. We are abandoning a lift station in conjunction with this, and that's the one that's currently adjacent to tractor supply over there. So we have 100% construction drawings from our engineer, and those are currently under review, as well as our right-of-way acquisition is currently underway for this project. So our plan is to bid and go to construction once all the right-of-way acquisition is complete. We are anticipating construction to be complete in July of '25, but that just depends on the timing with the right-of-way acquisition, so that's what we're hopeful for.
Basically, the linear park posed right of way.
Yes, yes.
So I guess once you acquire that, I guess that...
We'll have a portion of it. We won't necessarily, it depends on, you have to, you can only, unless you can buy more, if you acquire through a different type of negotiation, you can only get what you need unless people want to sell more, which we always open the opportunities up and we do that. There's some people that say, well, just take the whole thing, buy the whole thing from me, it just depends. Yep. Right. Yeah, with that, that's everything that I have for that, and I will do some follow-ups on some of these questions and send Dr. Ott an email to get back to y'all.
Any further questions, members?
Thank y'all for having me.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely appreciate it.
All right, next item is feature items discussion. Members, any items you wish to bring up at a future board meeting? Seeing none, okay. Item G is important dates, and that's Dr. Ott.
Have a few I'll point out as we close out the year. Tomorrow morning, very exciting event, we do the Top 10% 8th Grade Breakfast. That's all middle schools together, and that'll be at 8:30 a.m. at the Mayborn Center tomorrow morning. And then tomorrow evening at 5:30 here in this building, we have the Superintendent Scholars, and just as a reminder, that's the top 10 students that are, top 10 in the freshman class, top 10 sophomore, and top 10 junior. We have our Wildcat Mentor End of Year Event, May 15th, excuse me, at 11:30. And then we have the TISD Retirement Ceremony. I encourage you to go to that. That's at Temple Bible Church, 1145, on May 15th and June 1st. And we'll, we'll send some communications between now and then, but June 1st is our graduation, 10 o'clock at the, I'm trying to get used to saying this, the Cadence Center, Old Bell County Expo Center. But we're excited for graduation. Any questions on any of those? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ott. Items...
I'm so sorry. One more thing in your packet, you have a list of Temple ISD summer programs, and it's, I think it's three pages, maybe two and a half, but it's a...
I think we got an email on that, too.
Oh, you did, right. It's a compilation of everything, right?
Physical copy.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Item seven is consent items. Items A through J2, what is the pleasure of the board to deal with these items?
I move to approve the consent agenda, items 7A through 7...
Sorry.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Item eight, action items. A, human resources, Dr. Ward, no items tonight. Okay. Item B is academics, Dr. Adams, no items tonight, too. Okay. Item C is facility operations, Mr. Boyd, you have some items?
I do.
The first one is C1, consideration for approval of a guaranteed maximum price for construction projects at Hector P. Garcia, Kennedy Powell, and Ray Allen Elementary Schools.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Posey. Board, we're really excited to bring this to you tonight because this represents another milestone in the bond project list. So I'll just briefly talk about this, and Perry Cloud's in attendance as well with us tonight. We opened bids on April 30th at Cloud Construction's office. This is for construction at Hector P. Garcia, Kennedy Powell, and Ray Allen. And a summary of the base bid and the recommended alternates are listed below. We also submitted the backup information with that in the recommendation letter from Cloud. It's also in your packet. I'll be, right off the bat, I'll be real honest, the pricing was very favorable. We're excited about the way this turned out. The overall project cost for all three campuses will be under the projected budget amount. And in this day and age, that's not easy to do with inflation and the cost of instruction. I'll also mention back to these plans, Dr. Adams worked with us closely on development of the needs for these. The principals were actually involved in this process early on. And so the, each, what each campus receives is not identical. It is what they need for the removal of portables now. So the expansion on these three campuses does not grow, does not grow the student count, and it doesn't add capacity, but it addresses the promise that we made in the bond process that we would remove portables. So that is what, that is what these address. In all cases, they'll address some, I think, STEM classroom, fine arts classroom, art primarily, and then in some cases, meeting spaces, some cases, some additional classroom spaces. But we're excited for what this represents. So, so I'll tell you that the base bid is $10,307,610, and you see what is included in those. We also took a recommending taking of the alternates, which includes painting all of the campuses of all three, painting all classrooms, all office spaces, all cafeterias, and all libraries. And if approved tonight, we will actually begin this month, this next month, with the painting projects, and then the construction will be starting sometime in June. They'll mobilize sometime in mid-June or so, once we can get some portables out of the way as well. So really excited about what this represents. As always, this GMP has allowances and contingency funds, which if not expended, will return to the district. So that's what makes it a guaranteed maximum price. Do you all have any questions about this process? Let me also mention, the addition, the additions on all three campuses are expected to be completed in about a year. So those will, those will occur while school is going on. The painting in the classrooms and in hallways, corridors, the other areas, obviously that won't happen during school, but that will, part of that would be completed this summer. We've already spoken with the principal that would receive that this summer, and then the remainder of it would be completed during breaks throughout the school year and then next summer. So hopefully wrapped up with everything by August of 2025, if things work right and weather cooperates. Do y'all have any questions?
Members, you have any questions? If not, I recognize Mr. Gaines for a motion.
Move for consideration of approval of a guaranteed maximum price of construction project at Hector P. Garcia, Kennedy Powell, Ray Allen Elementary Schools.
Motion made by Mr. Gaines, is there a second?
A second motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Ayes have it, the passes, thank you.
Thank you. Dan, let me also say, really appreciate working with these guys. That team is great, and Perry and his guys do a wonderful job. Obviously, we're, they're working hard right now to get Sampson Howard wrapped up. They're working hard on the road project that
A lot going on.
As well as these. So there's a lot happening, and it's a pleasure to work with them, and they're very supportive, and they work closely with us in helping us schedule things, which is really important. So, thank you.
All right. Item two, consideration for approval to sell real property listed as lots 10 and 11, block 11, and lots 1, 2, 3, 10, 11, and 12, block 12, of Crestview First Edition, locally known as TE Dixon Property at East Avenue J and South 30th Street, Temple, Texas.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Posey. If you all recall, a few months ago, we came to you with a request to, after speaking with Head Start, to look at possibly a long-term lease on the property that is across the street to the west of Meredith Dunbar, where the old TE Dixon campus was. That's land that we currently do not utilize, and it's something that the district has not utilized for some time. We were unable to, in working with our legal counsel, it was something that we were not able to really accomplish in a way that we felt comfortable or that our legal counsel felt comfortable, more importantly. So, so in talking with her, she said that if we chose to do something else with that property, it would be best for us to go ahead and sell it. So, so what we're bringing to you tonight is a resolution that effectively authorizes us to take any necessary steps to advertise, solicit bids for this property. This doesn't sell the property tonight. All this does is give us, give us the ability to go out and seek bids, and then it will be a public offering. Obviously, we know that Head Start is one that plans to bid on this, but there could be others as well. So that's something that we will work through, establishing a matrix for the bid and for how that will roll, and then we'll have more to discuss with facilities committee meetings, especially as we move forward. So this just authorizes us to actually go out and solicit bids for that property. Do y'all have any questions on that?
Any questions, Mr. Boyd, about this? Recognize Mr. Gaines for a motion.
Move to consideration for approval of, to sell real property listed as lots 10 and 12, block 11, lots 1, 2, 3, 10 and 11, 10 and 12, blocks 12 of Crestview First Edition, locally known as TE Dixon Property at East Avenue J, South 30th Street, Temple, Texas.
We have a motion by Mr. Gaines, is there a
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Suarez. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The same sign opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Item D is finance, am I right? No items tonight. Item E is student services, one athletic department update, Mr. Hagenberg? And then it's
All right. No, Steve.
Mr. President, thanks for coming, appreciate this update.
Mr. Posey, school board, thank you for having us, and we're gonna present our athletics update for this time. This is something I understand we do every other year, and it's probably a little different than what we've done in the past, but we're gonna roll with it and hopefully kind of get you up to date on what we're doing right now and where we're headed. So first thing we're talking about is just the value of athletics. Athletics obviously connects to the academic curriculum, is part of the school day, completes the educational process. So we really believe in the importance of athletics in the school day, and we'll continue to fight for that moving forward. Through athletics, students learn the essential life skills such as teamwork, self-discipline, self-confidence, hard work, fair play. And it's also studies show that students who participate in athletics have higher grade point averages, better attendance records, lower dropout rates, and fewer discipline problems. So this is why we're here, this is why we believe in athletics and really, so here we go. So what's our purpose? First thing we've done since December, changing, with the change, is create a vision document. We're building everything, our vision's gonna be the best, our mission is build champions for life, and our focus is win the day. And we wanted to go with three statements that were easy to remember, not long paragraphs that kids and coaches couldn't recite, but so to be very concise, very simple, and to the point. So be the best, build champions for life, and win the day. And then to do that, we've come up with a graphic here of our four core building blocks, which is attitude, effort, growth, and grit. So everything we do in athletics moving forward is based on attitude, effort, growth, and grit. And we got to this point by having individual meetings with head coaches. I met with each head coach, sat down, asked about what they thought were strengths of the athletic department, what they thought were some challenges and obstacles that we needed to get better at, what they thought the perception and what other people would say about our athletic program, and took all that information and worked through it, and this is where we're headed.
Steve, did you present that to them this year, like in June?
Yes, yes, and then at the, at our first in-service in January 2nd, that first day back, we went through all this, started pushing this out, and it continued to grow in branding this as we move forward.
And would you both say it's been well received on boys and girls?
Very well received. I'm starting to see it in some of their tweets and then hearing kids recite it, so excited where we're headed. So attitude, what we're talking about there is it's gonna approach practice in competition with positivity, be coachable, and everyone has something to improve on. So we're gonna have positive attitudes, no negative attitudes, everything's gonna be positive. I'm a big positive attitude guy. Effort, effort's gonna be non-stop relentless force whose energy will be unmatched by our competition. So we're, you're gonna see our kids, and we've gone over this, given extra effort, full-out effort, not quitting during games or practices, but good effort. And growth, we're gonna commit to getting at least 1% better every day. We all can commit to lifelong learning, and we all can get better every day. So that's a big deal we talk about, that we can find something that we got better on each day. And then grit, tenacity, hard work, sacrifice will be our path success. Greatness requires internal toughness. A lot of this, also, I leaned on mentors that I've worked with here for the last 30 years, from Coach McQueen to Coach Spradlin. And like, one of the things that we had with Coach McQueen here was on the door in the office, teach toughness every day. And so that, we're gonna be, our kids are tough, they buy into that, that's what, the kind of kids we have, and it's gonna make us best. So the last thing on that is culture. This has been a big, big emphasis of mine right now, is culture in the athletic department. And so culture drives expectation and beliefs, expectation and beliefs drive behavior, behavior drives habits, habits create the future, and it all starts with culture. So I'm preaching culture, providing opportunities for culture growth, and we're gonna create a winning culture, and we're gonna create a sustained culture, which is gonna even sustain success. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Coach LeBlanc, and she's gonna share kind of where we're at right now.
So where we're at right now, in December 2023, we reorganized the athletic department, and what that reorganization was, we just kind of separated the director of athletics and our head football coach, they are now in two separate positions. If you look around the district, that's kind of the structure of what athletics departments are going to. Every team in our district actually is structured that way. And with that reorganization, we had to create a new organizational chart, which we established at that time. Student participation numbers, we always want to increase our numbers. I'll show you some numbers on the next two slides. Our athletic team success of the 16 sports that we have, we offer here at the high school, 11 of those sports competed in post-district events. Our student athlete academic recognition, we had 20 academic all-state athletes, which were presented before you earlier this evening. And then we're starting to, we're collaborating more with our youth programs because that's the foundation, so we want to get more involved with those. And I'll talk about a couple of programs that we're involved with that. These are our high school participation numbers over the last three years. As you can see, we've increased from last year, and our goal for next year is to continue to increase our numbers, so that is our goal, 1,075. That's our goal to have by next year, more of our participation at our high school, high school level. Our middle school participation, these are the numbers. Total, eight grade boys, we have 158 boys participating. Eighth grade girls, we have 131. We kind of broken it down, I'm just giving you the totals. Our seventh grade boys, we have 157, and then our seventh grade girls, we have 165. So those numbers are increasing, and again, our focus is to make sure they're increasing every year.
And I imagine there's a, probably a focus on Farm, because that's the largest middle school. They have numbers that are smaller than Travis. So I would imagine, in terms of participation, so I would imagine they're probably focused there.
Yes, sir, we are, that's one that we've been really targeting, looking at everything from staffing to, and we've had some good meetings over there, so we think we're on that track. And our numbers projected for next year that we've seen already with the early enrollment, the early scheduling numbers, look better.
So our accomplishments, as stated, of the 15, of the 16 sports we offer, 11 qualified for post-district play. Of that 11, five teams, five teams competed in regional qualifiers, and three teams were state qualifiers. So as a overall athletic department, 11 or 16, a pretty good, pretty good number for us. And as we stated, our youth programs is our foundation, getting our kids to start at a younger age. So these are some of the organizations that we've partnered with. The Junior Wildcats is our little football league that we have. The Junior Timcats is our basketball, our little basketball group that we have. The Rising Stars deals with our boys' basketball, and then the youth volleyball programs, we're getting more involved with the Ralph Wilsons, making sure we're there, making sure we're visible. And those partnerships include facility usage and coach training. So with that coach training, again, we're feeding them what we want to see once they get to high school, and we're starting at third grade now and not waiting until sixth or seventh grade. So they're hearing what we're gonna be teaching at a younger age. So we're setting that foundation with those, with those youth programs.
So how do we get here? The things we're really focusing on right now, culture, our core building blocks, which is that attitude, effort, growth, and grit. Communication, that was an area that I heard from lots of coaches that we could get better at, and so we've really focused on that. And then, once again, we're going back to some of what we talked about with, what Coach Spradlin was so good and I learned from him, too, is win the day. We're gonna celebrate everything we can and win the day and find ways that each day our kids won. So how do we get in there with the culture? We can create a family atmosphere. We've encouraged our coaches and teams to show up and support each other at their events. You'll see a few pictures there from our different teams that came to watch basketball games. We had teams come out and watch baseball, we had them come to soccer. Made a difference, was very noticeable to parents there. And then we're holding everyone accountable, coaches with coaches, coaches with athletes, athletes with coaches. And another saying that we really embedded in everybody is players love players, players love coaches, coaches love players, and coaches love coaches.
Coach, let me say something on the
Yes.
Mr. Press, let me say something on the coaches showing up. You know, I remember going to the baseball game, I think it was the last probably, I was one, two, or one. I saw them finish, but they weren't Hey, it was easy for me, those were the parents. They talked about that when I saw the concession or walking around, they talked about, hey, look, some associated, right, the other kids, what gets that
We've had great buy-in with the coaches and the other teams, and I'm excited to see where that takes off in the fall, too. The other deal we talked about is there's a little bit of, we were starting to get a little bit of a reputation of profanity use, and so that has been a spot that we've really emphasized with our coaches and that. And we talked about it quite a bit, I bought a box, I've got a box of 300 blue rubber bands in my office, if anybody needs one to wear on their wrist, to pop their wrist, to remind themselves, we're coming up with ways to help, to help remind. And we're starting to see a difference, I'm starting to see kids correct kids. I see coaches catch themselves and apologize really quickly, so I think we're making some progress there. It's gonna take a little bit of time.
It's long overdue, I'm so glad y'all are doing that. That's a huge thing for us.
And we went, I had numerous thoughts about, you don't need profanity to motivate kids, that there's plenty of other ways to motivate it, and there's plenty of examples out there with coaches that have been very successful that don't. So that is, that comes up, we talk about that in our monthly meetings each month, too. So, and then we're trying
Thursday, I have the scrimmage. I showed up for a little bit, I guess, before we had a, I did what I call a language lap, like the coaches, I'm just gonna walk around, and most of the people those type of people.
So, and, and we know that is, that is an ongoing process, that's not just, we don't just, we didn't just say that the January board meeting, move on, we are, we're practicing it on a daily basis. And then we're also concentrating on building meaningful, appropriate relationships with coaches, athletes, teachers, staff, and administrators. And you do that by being visible in the building, and we've got our, we've got all our coaches being better, more visible in the buildings, checking in where they can help, and during their conference times or before school and so forth, so that's been good. And another big push that I, that after talking to coaches too, was we needed to be, be more active in the community, in the community service. So we started really pushing how our, each team can be, participate in community service by making sure we're sharing community service opportunities out there and, and creating our own opportunities if there's not there. There's nothing, I tell coaches all the time, you need to get your team together, help pick up trash on our campus, there's nothing wrong with it. That's a good service for us to do. So we've got some, starting to buy into that, too, so that's an area that I, I'm excited to see how we grow in next year. These pictures right here are some of the community service events that we did this spring already, that our, our different teams participated in, from the cancer survivor dinner to the senior citizen Christmas dinner to the water burger. So how do we get our core building blocks, our attitude, effort, growth, and grit? Part of that is no days off. I tell the coaches, we're going to practice and get better every day. Athletics is, we, we need to use our athletic period to get better. We don't need it to, to, to sit and, and watch movies or whatever. So that has been a, a huge re-emphasizing that. We're going to work out during our athletic period, that's what we get it for, and we're going to use it for that. We're going to work hard every day, we're also going to have fun doing it. If, if the kids aren't having fun, and the coaches aren't having fun, then it's hard to get them to keep doing it. So there's, you can have fun and work hard, so we're really emphasizing that. Once again, we're talking about teaching toughness every day, and athletes don't care what you know until they know you care, and we're really harping that, and when they know that, you can push them and they, you can make them that much tougher, because they know that you, that you care about them, so you can push them that much harder. And then we're coaching with consistency. We, I'm big on consistent practice schedules, consistent parent communication, consistent player communication. So that's where our core building blocks right now. And then communication was, like I said, an area that was asked to be focused on, so right now, I'm having monthly head coaching meetings on the last Tuesday and Thursday of each month. I split that day up, my day where I have a day on the Tuesday, the mornings, I meet with the coaches that have a conference bridge in the mornings, and on Thursday that week, I meet with them in the afternoon, and that way I can still multitask and get a few other items on my plate done. And then we've started a monthly assistant coaches lunch and learn on the first Monday of each month. An area that was also identified was, we didn't do a lot with assistant coaches as far as communicating with them, so I'm bringing them in, providing a little pizza, answering questions, and then that one, I, I hope to start building, building some, some training into those sessions so that we can start growing those assistant coaches and get them ready to be head coaches.
And can I add to that? The coaches, assistant coaches really look forward to that. They love being able to come ask questions and, and meet. They, they're ready for that, so I've been hearing really, really good feedback on them being more involved and, and giving opinions and, and learning more, so that's been, that's been good for us.
And that's an area, like I said, for being here 30 years, there's a lot of times we would address head coaches, and, but we didn't really address those assistant coaches that weren't a head coach of another sport. And we have quite a few, it's probably 12, 12 to 15 on the staff that are just assistant coaches, and so trying to get them ready for the next level and, and make sure they're getting what they need. The other big deal that's been a big hit is our bi-weekly athletic department newsletter. We're emailing that out every other Monday with some Coach Association information, URL, information, going over rules, calendar, so forth, so that's been, that's good. It helps keep me accountable and make sure I get that information to them. We get, we started a head coaches book study, You Went in Locker Room First by John Gordon, with the head coaches this fall, this spring. Been real good feedback on that. It's a, it's a book about culture and building the culture, and then once you get the culture right, you can see wins on the court and on the field. And then we just completed a student-athlete survey. Now, there's a little hesitation on this, this is the first time we've done one of these, where we hired a third party to, and worked with them and created probably 45-question survey, from how your head coach practices, to how their communication, to, do you feel prepared for games, so forth? To, do you think there's any hazing going on, or any kind of, ask those, all those kinds of questions? We just completed that. They are compiling that information, this third party is, and we're sending that to us for us to use, to, to continue to see where we, where we have some areas of growth that need to happen. We will do that, I've committed to doing that with this group. We'll do it with head, with varsity coaches, varsity teams, and freshman teams. And ideally, we'll do it as soon as their season's over. When we do their exit interviews, before they transition to the next deal, you'll get your QR code. We'll encourage them to, to, to take the survey, it takes less than 10 minutes to do. I go over with them that, when it asks, what'd you think about the coach? Saying the coach sucks doesn't help us. We need, I mean, that's not good feedback, we need, we need good feedback of, of what you're, what you're upset with the coach, instead of just saying the coach wasn't good. We need better feedback. So trying to encourage them to do that, to write, and, and coaches have gotten in, I should make, I allowed them to see questions if they needed to, to kind of see what we were going to ask, and so I'm excited to see what kind of results we get back on that. We, we, the first 36 hours that we had it posted, the, the company called me back and said we had 52 responses, which they said was really good in the first 36 hours to get that many responses. So we'll see where we're at on that. And win the day, we're going to celebrate and recognize both student-athlete and coach successes. Coaches, another deal that we had kind of lacked in some programs was nominating our student-athletes for any and all postseason accolades, so that's a big push. Texas High School Coach Association has, has revamped, and now they offer all academic, all-state, and all-region for all sports, not just football. And to do that, you have to be a member, so we're, we're making sure everyone's a member of the Coach Association, from middle school up, girl's side, boy's side, so that we can, can nominate our kids for the secondary awards there. And then we want our leaders, we talked about this, our athletes to be leaders in the classroom, and they need to set the example for all the students. So where are we going? New facilities, they're, they're going to be a game changer for us. The athletic training room is going to have that space equipped to provide first-class medical, assessment, treatment, rehab for our student-athletes. The weight room is going to have an environment for our athletes to train and foster success, and to provide adequate space for our athletes to work out efficiently. Right now, we don't have the space we need to work out efficiently, so it, it causes lots of hurdles for, for the different teams to, to work in that time. So we're excited about that. There's also, when the project's complete, there's going to be nine instructional rooms that we can use for academic instruction, athletic film study, which will be great for, for, for that purpose. And then Travis and Lamar, the stadiums and the Bonham track, that home field for each of those campuses is going to be a great source of pride for athletes. We're going to have improved area for practicing games and opportunities for additional programming and community involvement in, in the tracks, just not having to bus those kids over to the track and having additional space so that we can use that track more efficiently is going to be great. And then the roadmap, what we're going, moving forward for the, this summer and through next year, we're going to continue to establish a winning culture in our athletic department based on the seven Cs, and this is from the, the book. Culture, contagious, consistent, communicate, connect, commitment, care. Our core building blocks are going to guide our athletic programs. This, in July, we'll start a, a Coach's Book Study for all 75 coaches on, in the program, not just head coaches, and we're going back to a tried and true, good one that I really like is the Energy Bus. You're going to hear us talk about no, no energy vampires and making sure that we're, we're having positive energy and positive expectations. And then new facilities are going to be huge moving into next year, so we're excited about that. So our goals for next year, increase participation numbers, 7th through 9th grade is our real big target area right now. Strengthen relationships with teachers and administrators, increase our visibility on campus, strengthen our communication with coaches and teachers, and increase community service participation. So that's our, our four, five goals that we're really going to focus on from my, from my perspective. Any questions?
First, I want to say thank y'all for taking on those new challenges, Coach Brenner, Coach LeBlanc. It's been a lot of huge turnaround that's going on right now, so I know y'all initiated as part of it, so thank y'all for doing that.
Unfortunately, we've been able to hire really good staff moving forward, too, which is a crucial piece of it. We've hired quite a few, I think, compared to 16 of them since December.
Yeah. Well, and changing the culture in our whole program, too, that's, that's, that's huge. Yeah. To reflect the rest of our district. Members, any-
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah. Item F is Board Committee Reports. One, Facilities Committee Meeting Minutes, April 25th, 2024, the meeting was canceled. But our next meeting is Thursday, May 30th at 4:00 p.m. The Policy Committee Meeting Minutes for April 24th, 24th, the meeting was canceled, so there are none. The next committee meeting is Wednesday, May 29th, 2024 at 4:00 p.m. We are adjourned. Thank you very much for attending tonight.